Is going to be recorded and is broadcast or may be rebroadcast on Westford Katz. Before we begin, I'd like to congratulate Bob Schaefer on his election win. Welcome back, Bob, for a second term, second consecutive term. I know you've been here before.
Thank you. My third.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Moving forward to open forum. Mr. Genowitz, do you have anything?
Just if anybody is here for 37 Powers Road, the applicant did request to continue that matter without discussion until the June 2nd meeting. So you don't anticipate anything going forward on that this evening.
Yes, there will be a call for some citizen involvement in a couple of studies that will be happening over the next year. So there's three different activities that will be going on. There'll be the update to our open space and recreation plan as well as some monitoring. There'll be a pedestrian master plan relative to the multifamily housing overlay district. And the last one is a Route 40 corridor study. So in the next two weeks, we think there'll be some advertisements on the town's website. There'll be an opportunity for some volunteers to express their interest through the volunteer activity forum. So be on the lookout for that.
Great. Thank you. Bob?
You have a couple items here coming kind of off the campaign trails based on questions I've got. One, could we at a future planning board meeting maybe have a discussion and revisit the hybrid meeting with Zoom? Select Board is now doing that. I know I talked to Jeff and he thinks that with things that are happening in the Commonwealth, we have language that could ease up the concerns about public hearings, but it would allow participation from residents not being here in person and also probably improve the viewability of our meetings, visibility. So I'd like to ask that that be a general discussion in the future. Second, I'd like to follow up on what we had a discussion of last meeting and suggest that we schedule a discussion for what will be our board policy for when one of our agenda items is requested to be can postponed after we've received the packet. We kind of had that discussion last time, but we didn't do anything official with that. So I'd like to follow up with that. Another one is, and I don't want to go into any specifics, but for sign permits that come before us for excessive size, just like to establish a policy like when they were in a strip mall, one of the items I'd like to see us receive is a scale mockup of what that would look compared to the surrounding businesses as well, because it's kind of hard to judge scale when you just look at the size of the sign. And when they ask for something that let's say is 25% bigger, it may just be due to length, may not be due to massing. So just something that would allow staff to advise the applicant to better inform us and help us make that decision. The last thing I just wanted to mention, and I mentioned this to town staff already, is how do we measure concerns about traffic from Boston Road? I know we've got it really well thought out. It looks well executed with temporary lights for a detour over to Tadmuck. But people are asking me about things like Conker Road and Hildreth Street already seen. Just an overflow because people are already finding what is the best workaround for themselves. They may not follow our detour signs. They may just do whatever they want to do. So if somebody's going towards Littleton, maybe that's the best way they do it is Hildreth. But I do want to make sure we are aware of where the congestion points are and whether we should request some alternative assistance if it is getting too bad over that side of town. So that's it for tonight.
All right. Anybody else have anything from open forum?
No.
For the audience, open forum. Okay, moving on. First public hearing is PB 2505, 37 Powers Road. The applicant has requested to continue this without discussion to our June 2nd meeting. Motion to continue this.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have PB 2507-0 in 415 Groton Road as well as an unnumbered Groton Road parcel. Application of Seal Harbor LLC for a special permit for common driveway. This will be the opening of the public hearing. So can I get a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Get a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Waterman.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. I'm Matt Waterman, Lantech Consultants for the record. Here with me is Mark Gallagher with Seal Harbor LLC. We're here tonight for a common drive special permit and stormwater management permit modification for three parcels of land on Groton Road. The special permit for the common drive is for two of the lots and the modification of the stormwater permit is for three lots. The board is familiar with this property. There was an A in our application at your last meeting, kind of creating the lots. It's on the westerly side of Blue Brook, on the south side of Groton Road, near the Loon Extension where it comes out under Route 40, kind of north of the Nab Nassett Lake, near Forest Road, kind of in that area. I'm just west of Forest Road. But Lot 6, 7, and 8, Lot 6 is far right on this plan on the overhead, 7 is in the middle, and then 8 is to the far west. 7 is under construction, or excuse me, 6 is under construction. The red house that used to be there near Flushing Pond Road has been torn down and the driveway has been installed and they're working on the house. If you've driven down Route 40, I'm sure you've seen it. The house is just visible as you're driving by. And then again, to the west, we have Lot 7, which actually has frontage on Route 40 as well. There's a stem that goes up kind of right where Joe is showing you to Route 40, Groton Road. And then the last lot, Lot 8, has frontage on Loon Way Extension. It's all residential A. There is a section of Lot 6 that is residential business B. That house that used to be there used to be a TV repair shop. Obviously, that's no longer in use and it's being utilized as residential. Lot 6 is just over four acres or 4.44 acres. Lot 7 is 2.76 acres. And Lot 8 is just under one acre at .99 acres. We're here tonight for the common drive for 7 and 8. What that does is it eliminates a curb cut on Groton Road utilizing its frontage or that stem that goes along the side of 409 Groton Road, helps reduce clearing and grading. It eliminates a curb cut on Route 40 and puts the curb cut on a lesser used road, Loon Way Extension. And overall, just creates less disturbance and I think is, from a planning standpoint, is a better plan approach. The common driveway is relatively small. It's only about 50 feet in length. It would obviously be constructed in accordance with the common drive standards, the 16 feet wide with three foot wide stabilized shoulders. There's a small drainage area. There's an easement. And then it would also include all the requirements for maintenance between the two homeowners of Lot 7 and 8 with a covenant. That would be reviewed and approved down the road if this was to move forward. The stormwater management permit is a modification of 6, 7, and 8. The land actually in its entirety was included with the original stormwater management permit that was issued for 6 and 7. 8 was not a parcel at that point. It was just labeled as parcel A, but actually the area in its entirety was modeled during that stormwater permit. So we've simply updated that stormwater permit to include the additional clearing and grading with Lot 8. There's additional roof drains for the house and then an additional rain garden. Engineering department has reviewed both permits, the special permit and the stormwater management permit. There's a handful of comments. We've gone through them. We have no issues with any of the comments. We'd be prepared to revise the plans and resubmit them before your next meeting. I know we also heard from the fire department and they did not have any comments with the exception that they would reserve, like in the building permit phase, comments associated with like building permit related items, but they did not have any site development comments. And then I think we heard from Conservation Commission. We are, we have filed with Conservation Commission to delineate the wetland that's to the west of Loon Way Extension that was originally delineated with the Lakeside Meadows. We updated the wetland flags. David Crossman with B&amp;C Associates, when we flagged Blue Brook and the wetland associated with Blue Brook, and we're in the process of getting that approved with the Conservation Commission. We're scheduled to be in front of them on May 28th. Flags didn't really move that much. It's actually kind of a steep approach to the wetlands, so there wasn't some movement on the wetlands like you can see sometimes where things can move around a little bit over the years, but it was actually fairly consistent. Be happy, is there any questions? And turn it over to the board.
Great. Thank you. Bob?
Really, the only one I was going to ask, it appears that the amount of impervious surface is going to decrease and it's definitely changing.
Changing.
Do you have any calculation about what the difference would be in terms of combining the driveways into a common drive and going out Loon Way?
Oh, I didn't. It would be reduced from that approach, yes. It's increasing from the stormwater management permit to the modification.
Right.
Because we're adding in Lot 8 in the driveway for Lot 8. But as far as the driveway length going out to Groton Road, I think it was, I mean, I think it's a good 400 feet out there. Those are deep lots.
It just seems to me it's an improvement from a stormwater management perspective.
Yes, exactly.
I know it may not have been all in the permit because of existing, but just want to understand what that.
Yeah, no, it definitely reduces the amount of clearing going out along the edge of 409, which is right where Joe was showing you. It's significantly less driveway clearing. The grades in there kind of go from west to east and so there would probably be, it wouldn't just be cutting in a driveway. You'd have to do some grading to create that level area. So it would probably be a 30-foot wide cut at a minimum, if not a little more, just going all the way out to Route 40. So yes, the common drive does reduce the amount of impervious area. I just don't have the exact numbers.
And just to refresh my memory, Loon Way, is that a right of way or is that private? Who owns that?
It's a good question. I may turn that over to, but I apologize, I didn't introduce.
Good evening, Mr. Board. Jonathan Silverstein here for the applicant to see you all. So that section of Loon Way, further down Loon Way is a public way. It's a town way when you get closer to the subdivision. But between the cul-de-sac and Groton Road, it is a private way. But it's a private way that's open to public use.
Okay. Who owns that? Is it in the budding parcel?
So it's a little bit complicated because a lot of the deeds go way back and don't necessarily say at one point part of Loon Way, this section was owned by the town. It was conveyed to an abutter for purposes of creating a private way. Long story short, it would be my view that under the derelict fee statute, for the most part, people own to the center line along their frontage. That being said, kind of doesn't matter because all the budding property owners have the right to use and improvement. So this was something I discussed at great length with town council and ultimately town council agreed that my client has the right to use it and that it serves as frontage.
Are people using that section today?
Oh, yes. In fact, the town uses it very frequently and maintains it, to my understanding. And it frequently, people use it all the time to get to the subdivision, to the public portion of the road from Groton.
Okay. All right. Turn it over to you, John.
Okay, I just have one question. Lot 7, is that being constructed for a specific buyer? Because I see it's got an additional dwelling unit. So how big is that ADU or is it already sold?
It is sold. It is sold and it's not being presented under the ADU. It's being presented just as one house. So it's a complicated looking footprint, but it is connected and it is anticipated that I think the in-laws or the parents would be living with them in one end of the house and they'd be living in the other end, but it is one large house.
Okay. Yeah, it's just it's kind of a, you know, that kind of you looking weird structure. Like what does that go with, you know, sports is two bedroom ADU.
Yes, and I think that might be an old note on there, so I apologize. But no, I think there's, I think it's a solarium that's being built and they have a planting room and so they're into gardening. And so I believe that that big open area is going to be like a courtyard for their plants.
Okay. All right. Was it? Thank you.
Okay.
No, I saw engineers comment, so as long as you guys address, I'm sure the applicant will address those. That sounds good. And I just, the only thing I would say is, you know, for owners, it already sounds like there's already an owner on Lot 7, but for the other lots, owners should be made aware that Loon Way is a private road that's being used publicly. So just so they're aware of that, I guess.
So Lot 7 doesn't have frontage on Loon Way, does it?
No, it has frontage on Groton Road, 40.
So I saw that the numbers, the numbering for the houses and for the parcels hasn't been determined yet, right?
Correct.
But the intention would be that Lot 7 would be a Loon Way address and not a Groton Road address? Or is that, I mean?
To be determined. I'm not sure. Unless you.
Generally, that gets determined by 911 and the post office. So I think we'll leave it to them unless.
Yeah, I think the E911 committee in town would, you know, combination building, police, fire, they review these matters and they set what is the proper course. The applicant may have some options, but at the end of the day, it has to pass muster with that committee.
Appreciating that it's their call and their discretion on that. Is it possible for us to give a suggestion that a Loon Way address be provided? I would assume that for the first responders, it would make more sense for them to go to a Loon Way address and not try.
I'm very sure they'll have their preference and if, you know, I do know they're, it's a good thing to have an address associated with where you get access from. So, but I don't want to speak for them, but trust me, they're not shy about this, so.
Great. Fantastic. Great. And then the only other thing is just ensuring obviously the common driveway requirements of each house sharing in the burden of maintenance will be kept in the deeds for those houses, all that. Great. Then I'm good.
Great. Yeah, I don't have anything else on this. Anybody from the audience?
Can I, I just want to confirm that we did confer with our town council who, I just want to confirm what their attorney stated, that it is proper for them to make this application. So we did vet that with our council.
All right, seeing no other comments from the audience.
Quick question. Tom Peppin.
Please, you go up to the microphone, name and address.
Tom Peppin, resident on Loon Way, one Loon Way. Question regarding that extension that's private. It isn't, it's poorly maintained right now and I don't know if that's a result of the ambiguity over private public or the wetlands restriction. Are there any plans to make that more passable? I mean, there's some significant potholes. Maybe a challenge getting fire emergency vehicles down there. But again, if there's, looks like there's going to be more traffic going through there. Just wondering if that's a possibility, discussion point.
Great question. Mr. Waterman?
I don't think we have anything proposed. We certainly could talk to the applicant and see if there's any issues or any proposals to make any improvements.
I mean, nice to see it graded. It is terrible condition.
Yes, this was a topic that I think we raised early on in the process, that there might be the need to inspect the condition and if they're relying on that access to get to the common driveway, that if it was substandard, they might need to make that, you know, hole for at least purposes of what they need to get to the common driveway. That's one of the things, you also mentioned one of our other, I won't say concerns, we just want to make sure that there's a well thought out plan for calling out the maintenance responsibilities once whatever level is determined is necessary to get that access. We just think it's fair to both all these homeowners as well as anyone who may use or benefit from Loon Way, that that should be part of this conversation and it shouldn't be an unknown after the close of this public hearing process. So it's something that we want to work the applicant on, I think.
Great. Any other questions? All right, so we should continue this to our second, June 2nd meeting, answer some of these questions and get a draft decision together. Is it appropriate?
I think working on a draft decision would help flesh out these issues. Is June 2nd adequate time, do we think, to?
For us to make the change in the plan, yes.
Okay.
And will hear something more definitive on the roadway in June 2nd?
I think we can make progress on that end. That's the only, if it was just up to us, you know, we'd say sure, but I think June 2nd is still very probable.
Yeah, so it includes consideration of a long-term maintenance requirements in that decision.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? I can have a motion to continue this matter to June 2nd, 2025, 7 o'clock in this room.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So if I may, for those folks here who are interested in this application, if for some reason more time is needed, please check the planning board agenda. So if there's a request in advance to continue to a different meeting, we'll note that on the agenda, okay? So please feel free to check the agenda or call our office, okay? Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Thanks. Have a good night. Thank you.
Just a second. Well, we have PB 2509, 11th Corner Stone Square, Unit A 500. Due to the required public hearing notice not being published in the newspaper, we need to reschedule this public hearing to June 2nd.
How long do we continue PB 2509 to the June 2nd meeting of the planning board hearing? Do you need me to go to 1?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next public hearing is PB 2510, Kenlock Drive, 64 and Right of Way, over 66 Main Street, public hearing. Archstone Builders to modify previously approved definitive subdivision, stormwater management related to roadway and drainage construction. Good evening, Attorney Robbins.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, Melissa Robbins from Farrell and Robbins. Also with me tonight is Dave Guthrie.
Well, you know, I've got to open the public hearing. I'm.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Motion to waive the notice?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also with me tonight is Dave Guthrie, who's the applicant, and Mark Slager, who's the project engineer. As you stated, we're here tonight for a modification to a previously approved subdivision, but this modification will not change the approved right of way. It's not going to, excuse me, the right of way layout. It's not going to change any of the lot dimensions or any of the lot lines. Really, the waivers are technical in nature and I'm going to let Mark Slager talk about that in a moment. Just some general housekeeping and some stuff that was brought up in the staff report. Additional waiver was requested from staff and I have submitted that as a supplemental waiver request. We do not have engineering review, so we still need that. We have some board of health comments back and forth, but we haven't wrapped those up yet, so those are still outstanding. We did meet with fire department, but they haven't given written comments yet, so those are still outstanding. And we also received comments from the Conservation Commission, which we've received in the packet, but we haven't had an opportunity to respond to yet. I think with that, I'll just turn it over to Mark so he can go through what the plan changes are and just briefly go through the waiver, the additional waiver request.
Okay, great. Again, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering. As Melissa mentioned, this is a previously approved subdivision and we're only looking to modify some of the construction requirements of the roadway itself. With respect to the Conservation Commission, we are not proposing any work within the 100-foot buffer zone, so all work will be outside of their jurisdiction. If I could have a pointer.
Disappears frequently. It usually turns up though, eventually.
I've got one of those chains like they do with the pins at the back.
Maybe you could direct.
Okay, just to get started, the development has access off of Main Street via a right of way across the property at 66 Main Street to access the property, which was known as 64 Main Street. Prior to the development, there was an existing house with a corral and small sheds and everything. That has since been replaced with a new house, new driveway. The existing driveway was repaved. There's been some new tree plantings and some lights that are shown on the plan, so Lot 1 has been completely built out. But in order to get access to the second house, we need to construct a roadway as approved. What we're proposing to do is, well, let me start by saying what was approved was for the first 30-foot right of way across the 66 Main Street parcel. That was approved as 18 feet wide with slope granite curving and no sidewalks. For that portion of the road, what we're proposing is to just eliminate the granite curve and go with Cape Cod burn, maintaining the same width, maintaining the same drainage features. They did lower the road profile a little bit to minimize the adjacent grading, so it's essentially the same road. After we get on to the 64 Main Street parcel, we'd like to request the roadway be changed from 20 feet down to 18 feet. However, what we'd be doing is eliminating the granite curve that was proposed and approved and replacing that with two-foot wide grass shoulders. So effectively, we'd be going to a 20-foot wide travel way as opposed to the 20 feet that's approved currently. As far as drainage modifications, we've modified some of the drainage at the, I wish I hit the mouse. At the beginning, there's a couple of catch basins.
Okay.
Okay. So right here, we have a few catch basins. Those are in the same position as previously approved. We're going to collect that runoff, bring it down the road to another set of catch basins and create a swale along this boundary line, the northeast boundary line. So with the revised drainage, we would just be having a few collection points and discharging the drainage into a riprap swale. And all that would be collected in a pipe drainage system and go down into the stormwater detention and infiltration system, which has already been approved. There is a slight increase in the runoff going to the infiltration system, so I did make it slightly larger. I added one row going uphill away from the wetland, so there's, none of the work is any closer to the wetland than was previously approved. These modifications do require waivers above and beyond the waivers that were granted with the original submittal. The first waiver would be to construct a drainage swale with a slope greater than 5%. The town regulations require no more than 5% for a grass swale. However, I'm proposing a riprap swale that will be aligned with filter fabric and then six to eight inch riprap stones to control the velocity of the flow. This was similar to a design that was approved on another subdivision and the suggestion of the engineering department at that time, they just recommended riprap as opposed to grass since it would be a little less prone to erosion during high flow events. The second waiver that we're requiring for the roadway itself would be to eliminate the slope granite curve on the roadway for the full length. And I presented the waivers and the justification with the package, the submittal package. One of the, one of the other minor. One of the, one of the other minor changes to this was the landscape plan. If you could scroll down, oh, that would be me, huh? So landscape plan. This takes into consideration the trees that were already planted on Lot 1. So I moved around a couple of the plantings, reduced the number of plantings based on the seven trees, I believe it is, that were planted on Lot 1. And one of the other changes was in the schedule. I had, previously, there was a Bradford pear, flowering pear tree that was approved. The tree warden has recommended not using that on other subdivisions. So I made a change to a, what did I change it to? A Northern Pin Oak, which was a replacement used in one of the other subdivisions. And I believe that's this, before we, just, before we made any of these changes, we met with the fire department just to get some feedback initially from them. They were receptive of the idea. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but we would not have gone forward if they weren't receptive. And similarly with engineering, they didn't have any objections to this, but again, we'll wait for their report as they, they come through everything. And I believe with that, question on everything, so I will turn it back over to the board.
Great. Bob, questions, Bob, comments?
I guess my, my biggest concern knowing this area and past discussions has been involved around the drainage. There is some significant sloping, I think, from this property off towards Ward Hill. And I seem to recall, we had some similar discussions with Ward Hill during the Wool Sack construction.
Correct.
And that's the area that I want to make sure we, with these changes, what are we doing to affect that drainage? You know, you say you're putting the riprap in, but does it change the calculations in terms of how much drainage is gonna come off of that road?
It really doesn't, because we're not changing the amount of impervious all that much.
Okay.
So I did have to, the only reason I made the infiltration system larger was because the system, the way it's working now, collects more yard runoff than the prior design. So that yard runoff going into the roadway drainage system has to be accounted for, so I, I did that. And I'm sure Jeremy will take a close look at that when he gets around to the review.
And during construction, I guess that would be a large area of concern as opposed to post-construction.
Correct, yeah. We will be proposing, is an erosion and sediment control plan, so we will be doing...
Is the construction of that catch basin one of the first things that gets done, that retention basin?
Well, no, not the infiltration system. We don't want water going into that until the upgrading site has stabilized. So there'll be a temporary sediment basin that will be constructed. And that would be down in, in an area where the head wall is gonna be located.
If I may, Dave, go through the applicant.
Yep.
The, the existing pavement out there now is, in some cases, 12 to 14 feet with, with none of this drainage installed. So almost everything that's happening is, is an improvement compared to what's there now. But it's functioning, highly functional now.
Okay.
Kind of in form. So we anticipate that when we put this infiltration basin in, direct it into a swale, some catch basins, it's gonna be substantially an improvement, quite honestly. Adding four feet of asphalt, and of course, an additional home at that time, that's gonna, that's gonna be focused right towards that infiltration basin that will be built. It should be, I think engineering will find it substantially better compared to what's there now. Not necessarily speaking for them compared to the original design.
And also, the stone swale that we are proposing is right along the northeasterly boundary, so that will collect any runoff and prevent any runoff from leaving the site and going on to the adjacent properties. It'll be directed down into our stormwater management system.
Okay, I'm gonna pass at this point.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, just a couple of questions. I assume that this is gonna be a private roadway, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Theory on why you want to go to berm as opposed to the slope granite curve? Berm doesn't hold up, so just...
Well, it's, it's just a very small subdivision. Trying to cut a little bit of cost out of it too, but also keep a more rural look as opposed to making it a more inviting roadway for traffic where they might not know where they are and, you know, have some unwanted traffic down there. But just kind of keep it a little more rural and save a few, save some money on the construction costs.
So, I mean, my concern obviously is delivery trucks, you know, we've cut down the size of the roadway now, so, you know, the Amazon guy who comes down is certainly not going to, you know, I'm just concerned about it holding up, because obviously, they, you know, just do their thing and not going to...
Right. Let me, let's just clarify, the Cape Cod berm is only gonna be in this first 300 feet or so. After that, there's gonna be no curving at all, just that stabilized grass shoulders. As far as delivery trucks, there's a circular driveway on Lot 1 now, so if there's any delivery vehicles, they can certainly have ample turnaround space. And we're also proposing a circular driveway down the end as well.
Okay. Concern a little bit too about, you know, setting precedent, you know, um, you know, with this kind of a waiver, is the applicant willing to, I don't know, offer something to the town, you know, consideration to the town for this kind of modification or waiver? Not that it's a lot of money, but something to think about.
Sidewalk, do we get a sidewalk?
Yeah, sidewalk, something.
It's for two homes. I just saw them come out of here 10 minutes ago with two homes on it, no request for a sidewalk or a donation. Are we different than them?
Without getting into that conversation, I have some added concern for this proposal, given that it's gone to land court twice, appeals court once, and there is an approved subdivision. So I just suggest respectfully that if you are considering the waivers or any offset, that you really limit it to just what is different about what is previously approved that they could construct now versus the changes they're looking to make. So I would just really focus in on the added waivers that are before you in terms of what already is approved. And I do want to confirm, we did speak with our town council, and their opinion is that the added waiver for owner, I'll call it the owner-applicant waiver is, is necessary, so...
I guess if there's a concern with the, with the granite versus the Cape Cod, we put the granite in for the first 300 feet. We're just trying to keep it looking like a private drive for two homes, not, not a public roadway, which is not a public roadway. There are a few of these scattered around town, one adjacent to us right now that is, is pavement, it's pretty, it's a common drive. There's six or eight houses down there, and it just looks like a little driveway out of the town center. We're trying to maintain the same look. We could do it without the Cape Cod berm, we try and do it without anything, but I don't think that necessarily works for the abiding home there, so we try to contain it with some curving. But if it's granite for that first 300 feet that you're concerned, we'll go back with you. It's an aesthetic issue.
Yeah, okay.
Don't...
Yeah, I mean, I'll wait for the engineering comments to, like, have my final comments. I guess I would say, for, for me, it's all about managing the flow of the water, 'cause I'm kind of looking at the, at the height elevation of the road that you provided, and it just seems like, does it kind of like dip in the middle of, of the, of that common drive back? Does it kind of like go, kind of, it goes down towards the back of the property, towards the house, right?
Correct.
But in between, the run that's in front of the other house, there's a bit of a dip in the roadway, it kind of looks like, from an elevation perspective, yeah?
Right in here?
Yeah.
No.
No, further back. Keep going, right, in there, yeah, between that first curve and the second curve.
No, there's no dip in the roadway there.
Nope, not there. Right, right in front of House 1.
Uh, no, there's no dip in the roadway there.
There's no dip there, that's flat, okay. So for me, it's just about, from a, you know, Cape Cod versus granite berming, it's gonna be whatever moves the water the best, and that should come in the engineering comments, and then otherwise, I'm not opposed to it not having, you know, curbing. Makes sense, it's two houses.
Darren?
That's it.
Yeah, similarly, I'll, I'll wait for engineering's comments, 'cause I'm sure they'll take that into account if they're looking at the drainage, curving or no curving. So curious to see what their thoughts are on the proposed design too, so... You know, as long as that runoff is contained and managed, I think that's the main concern.
Right.
Yep. I have full faith in our engineering department to make sure that the water's controlled. I would ask that you take a look at the Conservation Resource Planner's comments. I would like to see the, the trees marked and, if possible, put the, the permanent markers where the 100-foot buffer is. I don't know that the twice-weekly inspection is necessary. I know what happened up at, they mentioned spotting estates, and, you know, it was just so much water. I guess we go to the public. If you have a comment, questions, please come up to the microphone, state your name. Please come up.
Hey there, Lisa Groppianic, Six Wheeler Lane. So I was just curious about the drive coming down into the two lots and what that is gonna look like. Right now, there's a lot of trees, there's a small stone wall separating the two, you know, little one-lane roads. So what is, you know, from 6 to the Main Street gonna be looking like there?
All right, Mr. Slager, you want to allow?
Sure. The landscaping plan details the number of trees that were gonna be removed and also the trees that are gonna be replaced. They'll provide replacement screening along here, so there is a detailed landscaping plan that has been approved. We're not proposing any changes to this area. But there are some trees that are gonna have to come down, and there's some evergreens that will be planted to replace the trees that are coming down, which are primarily hardwoods. So these will provide a lower, um, lower-level screening, so it'll be providing actually better screening than what's there now.
Okay, and I guess I was a little confused about the whole sidewalk thing. You know, we don't, we don't have a sidewalk. I don't know if a sidewalk would really benefit having, you know...
Yeah, there's no proposed sidewalk here.
Okay, yeah, so, that's my question for now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I add to that? Mark, could you just clarify for, for everyone that's here? When you say no changes, no changes from the previously planned or no changes from the current existing conditions? I just want to set expectations for construction of what's happening from what's there today to what it's going to look like going forward. So everybody understands when and if we start out there, that, you know, it is, it's going to be different than what's there today.
Yes. When I mentioned no changes, there's no changes from the plan that's already been approved. It is different from, it's gonna look different from what's there. I mentioned there's some trees that are noted on the, the landscape plan, they're noted as to be removed. And then there's the additional plantings that are shown on the plan to supplement the trees that have been removed.
Sure, come on up.
It's Groppianic, Six Wheeler Lane. So we have a bunch of, you know, trees up there now that they're planning on, obviously, removing, as they just stated. So the stone wall that is there now is kind of being hidden because of all the landscaping that is there. So when the trees are removed, are they planning on kind of, kind of putting that stone wall back together again? It's a little haphazard at this point, so I'm just curious how that's all gonna look.
If there's any disturbance to the wall during the tree removal, then it will be repaired as needed. It's just a stacked boulder wall that represents the property line.
Yeah, it's, it's a little, I think with all the snow and trees kind of being in there, the stone wall is really kind of taken a different form, kind of going down. So didn't know if that was gonna be something that was gonna be kind of, kind of put back together again a little bit as the trees go in.
Is it, is it your wall, Mr. Slager, or is it the neighbor's wall? Do we know?
Well, we kind of own both of it.
The property line runs down the center of the wall.
It's a little sticky.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, wouldn't be opposed to having the stone wall looking a little bit nicer as it's, you know, a lot of the stones are pretty large and over time, you know, with the shrubbery and the trees that have grown up. Some of the boulders have kind of fallen over, and, you know, we've done our best to kind of put them all back together again, but if they're working on that lane, that'd be something to consider.
We're certainly happy to manage our side of the wall.
Great.
Hi, good evening. John Conway, 66 Main Street. I guess my questions, I have a couple of questions. The first, we, you've mentioned several times the previously approved plans. So why, what's, why does this need to be done? And why are you guys doing this?
Keep on on to them, yeah.
Yeah, we feel like it was overdesigned, and we're just trying to simplify it. Granite curving on a private drive, which was on...
So there's no public value or anything like that?
Yeah, we say less impervious is public value, yeah. We would have built less, less asphalt, so it's less impervious, less impact on the environment, so it's public value there, yes.
Okay. Usually, there's a reason to do something, I guess would be my...
Yeah, I think I stated on that.
The second thing I have is why, in reference to Kenlock Drive. It's approval, what's approved there are two dwellings. It's not a massive subdivision, to use your words earlier. So why the push to name a right-of-way that's over my property, Kenlock Drive? Or some, or by, by virtue of other places in, in Westford, you drive around, there's certainly a lot of, you know, 64A, 64B. There's, my brother lives on the Evergreen Circle, and that's his circumstance there. So why, why the push to name it?
I assumed it was a regulation.
I think it's partly, is it the E 901 committee?
So if I may, as of, as of right now, the currently approved plan, it is titled Kenlock Drive, but based upon some comments received from the Conways. I did reach out preliminarily to the E 901 committee. I also did reach out to Mr. Fennel, who lives in the newly constructed home that's currently 64 Main. Mr. Fennel did not offer any objection to retaining his current street address, 'cause that takes no effort. So, but the real concern is what is approvable by the E 901 committee. I did begin those conversations at this point. They do not offer an objection yet at this time, but they have to, as a committee, meet. They are open to considering that, that would work for their purposes, but they're not gonna pre-commit until they meet as a committee. However, one of the things that they would have to look for, if it is not named Kenlock or some other drive with a, a street sign, is there would have to be some consideration for street addressing at the entrance along Main Street, so it's clear that there is, say, a 64 and a 64R. It would have to be something that would satisfy their concerns, and there could be some additional requirements once they get past your property and, you know, where the driveways might, might split or something. But they're open to that, but they can't promise that at this point.
Yeah. And then could we modify this, part of this modification, modify the name of the subdivision? Would that be appropriate, or it would not have to happen?
I'd like to wait before...
Well, there is precedent, because other parcels in Westford are clearly marked, I mean, mailboxes are used with either the R designation or an AB.
But that could be a different scenario. It could be a hammerhead lot that was brought in after the fact. It may not be a subdivision as this is, Mr. Slager?
Yeah, I, I would also like to point out that there has been a few common driveways that have been approved that have been named as well.
That is true.
So it's not unusual to have a private driveway named. This one specifically provides frontage for two lots, whereas a common driveway generates its frontage from the existing roadway. However, some of the common driveways at work have been named.
So we can, I'm sure we'll have to discuss, but we own it, which is different in some of those circumstances where people are naming a common driveway because it's jointly owned. This in particular is a right-of-way that they pass over on property to get to those properties. And we've, we've just, we've had some good debate about it, which leads me to my final question.
Before we move on, I think, just to be clear, if the homeowner isn't opposed to it, planning board wouldn't be opposed. I don't want to speak verbatim, I don't think we'd be opposed to not calling that and putting that up there, so I think if you can work with the home...
As a homeowner of 66, we are opposed to it.
No, the Kenlock. So what we're saying is, if, if the homeowner, Mr. Fennel, isn't opposed to changing it, then I don't think... to changing it, then I don't think the Planning Board would have an issue with it, as long as the E-911 Committee's okay with it.
No, I think, Jeff, that's fair. We'll wait and see what comes out of it and go from there. The final question I have is, kind of given, given these waiver requests are sort of, let's say, opening up some discussion, I guess I would ask a, maybe this is a legal question, on what is the town's definition of a dwelling? Because when Land Court handed down their decision, it was for two dwellings. And given that, given that the lot one now has a roughly 5,000-square-foot home and a roughly 2,000-square-foot pool home, pool house, as it's referred to, does that count in the Westford zoning or Planning Board? Does that basically mean that's the second dwelling, which is what the Land Court approved, two dwellings? And I don't know, I tried to research it, had a few people look for it. We haven't come across that yet, but that is something that I would be curious for a perspective, if anyone has one.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that quickly. We're allowed to construct on each of the lots in accordance with Westford zoning by law and the Mass Building Code.
To answer my question.
If, if the board would like us to get an opinion from Council--
Simple question, the town council.
--certainly do that. However, if it was considered more than a single dwelling unit, then that would require, you know, special relief to do that. So my expectation is that anything besides the primary dwelling would be considered accessory to the overall principal use. So, but we can certainly get that confirmed by Council if that's the board's wish.
Is the pool house considered an ADU?
I don't have that information handy, but I'm sure it was reviewed at the time of the building permit process.
So I do know that if, for example, you know, you have a microwave, it's not really considered. If you have a bedroom, if you have multiple bathrooms, if you have a stove, there's certain criteria that would legally, in certain towns, make that a dwelling, which potentially, in the letter of the law from Land Court, could be interpreted that, that pool house is a second dwelling, therefore they have their two dwellings on the property.
We're happy to get an opinion from Council.
So anyway, that, that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure?
I just, I just noticed. Lot one, lot two, lot two. Is that lot two part of other lot two, or is that somebody else's lot two?
Yeah, they are one and the same. There's a strip of land--
Oh, it goes all around?
On the other side of the road.
Okay. So that's all, all of that acreage of lot two is for that second house?
Correct.
Anybody else in the audience? Any questions? Comments?
Hi, Emily Byrne, eight-wheeler lane. We admittedly moved in after this Land Court everything occurred. So the first we heard of anything going in next door was within a butters notice for this meeting. But when I went back and looked at the Planning Board agenda, there was a meeting on February of this year. And I just been wondering why there was no butters notice?
I believe there was.
So the earlier meeting was simply, as I recall, to endorse the plans consistent with the ruling of Land Court. So there's no new public hearing process required to simply carry out and sign the plans once the public hearing process is done, or in this case, after it's gone through the courts and then finalized and no further appeal. So it's an administrative action that just really documents the process that previously occurred.
It seems like the Land Court decision was several years ago, right?
It is correct.
So is there no expiration or timeline for getting plans that through prior to--
There was a slight note problem on the plans that had to be re-signed, 'cause it had been, what, seven years since--
Yeah, I just, typically, it's like two, two years to start construction.
It was an administrative, it was nothing--
So I just wondered how this--
A modification to the clerk's certification.
Yeah. So we did check at the time that they wanted to move forward the plans. I will note also that there is additional timeframes allowed for subdivision plans. It is different than a typical, say, site plan review. But even in addition to that, there has been the Permit Extension Act, which does grant additional amount of time to take action. So it's covered on multiple ways because we haven't amended our subdivision rules or regulations or the zoning requirements that would affect this subject property. So it is, in my opinion, still fully valid and for some time still.
Okay. Just would be nice as a butter to have known that this was happening, especially if it went back before the Planning Board. People are moving in and out and seven years is a long, five years, however long it's been, is a very long time.
Understood.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Smith, two-wheeler lane. Just to go back to the lot two, the two different lot twos, is there, we are only approved for two lots back there, am I correct?
Correct.
Was, I think that there was three at one time, then Land Court, you went back and it was two. Is that gonna be a--
So initially, in 2015, there was an application for a three-lot subdivision. That application was withdrawn. They then refiled for a two-lot subdivision, which they approved, went to Land Court, was remanded back, got approved, went to Land Court, went to Appeals Court, and then came back. So it is for just the two lots, one additional lot than what is already constructed back there. So there would be one additional dwelling yet to be constructed for a total of two.
So is there any, down the road, is there any possibility that we could be back here again, possibly?
So we cannot prevent someone from making an application, but my recollection from 2015 is that they went to the two lots because they did not meet all the requirements, the zoning requirements, to get three lots. And I don't know if you remember differently.
I don't remember. It was a while ago.
Yeah. Nothing saying they can't come back, but--
Of course. No, I mean, I figured that. And going back to Dave's comment earlier, you know, living in the center, it's just kind of nice to have everything be quaint. And I think that's ideally what you're saying, what I think he was saying tonight earlier was, it would be nice to have it be a smaller, less traffic. I mean, there's tons of traffic. I've lived in my house my entire life. It's a little embarrassing, but we're back at it. And, and there's been so much change. Not, I mean, some really great change, but, you know, the traffic is bad. And it would be great to kind of keep it at a minimum if possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, Mr. Borstek, Mr. Genowitz was engineering on board with getting comments for our next meeting?
I think that would be vital, yeah.
Is that okay with you, Attorney Robbins?
Yes. So do you second, Mr. Chair?
And allow enough time for addressing all the comments, in your opinion?
Yes, we have all the other comments, so as long as we get engineering, we should have plenty of time to respond.
So we have fire department comments, too?
I don't know.
I will--
No, they're--
I will also reach out to fire.
Very short-staffed right now.
Yes.
We'll also reach out to Council. I do expect it to be fairly simple. So normally, I'd say push it further, but I think it's a lighter lift.
Yep.
And then again, just a reminder to everyone, if for some reason comments are taking longer to address, please check the Planning Board agenda and/or reach out to the Planning Department just to make sure there isn't any request for a continuous, okay?
Anything else from the board?
I guess I'd like a little education from the last one. One of the concern is, we heard fire. And I guess the other one, I just wanna know what they're doing with snow storage, how this road gets plowed.
Just the way it's plowed now, it'll be just plowed off to the side of the road, right onto the grass shoulders.
So it'll be down at the end of lot two?
Well, it'll be off to the side of the road the whole way, and there might be a larger embankment down at the end of lot two.
Yeah, it's not a full push. It's too long. So it's a lot, laid to the side of the--
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's much space on the side.
What's that?
Doesn't look like there's very much space on the side. All the space for the snow on this is at the end.
No, there's, if you drive down there, you'll see that there's a lot of grass on the side, on both sides. But I would imagine there'll be some snow storage over in here, between the road and the swale, and then plenty of storage down in here on both sides.
There's a push on both sides, actually. Plenty to address on that. The longest push is probably three, first three hundred feet, and then we start to turn.
And all of the runoff would go into the roadway drainage system or into the swale, and then ultimately down into the infiltration system.
Well, it depends where you put the snow storage, 'cause some of it could go off the side onto the other properties. That's part of my--
Well, I think, again, we're looking at adding four feet asphalt to this, right? From what's currently there. This is not, not coming into virgin territory. There's 12, 14 feet out there now. We're gonna end up at 18 feet. So it's not a substantial increase.
Yeah, so either--
And it's being formalized.
Whichever side of the road the snow's on, which will be on both sides, it's gonna go into either the roadway drainage system or this swale. If it's over in this area, there's a yard drain here that's gonna collect it and dump it down into this head wall. So all of the snow melt, except maybe a small section of this driveway.
Any of the snow you put onto lot two, the first part of lot two?
This?
Yeah.
It will melt and come down into this swale.
It will come down into the swale?
Yes.
Because it looks like it might go off to 68 Main Street.
Well, there's a, there's a stone wall here that acts as a fairly significant barrier as well.
Because I understand how the water gets trapped in the road is, when you push the snow over the edge of that curb, it's gonna go in all the directions possibly.
Well, in the first 300 feet, it's gonna get plowed straight, so it's not gonna be pushed to the side. There's no room to push it to the side. It'll be dumped down onto here, seep into the ground. I mean, if there's enough snow to plow, there's gonna be enough snow cover on the lot itself to prevent any, you know, runaway snow material.
John Conway again. Clarifying question, Dave. When you said the four feet, is that the right-of-way or when you get back into the--
Back into the subdivision.
I think he asked the Chair the question. You asked it to me. Is that how it works?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry. Me? My question is on the existing right-of-way. Is that which has already been, the first home was put in, the road was replaced, the right-of-way, they dug it up and did a nice job on it. But you need to, you're not digging that up again, are you? The right-of-way, 30-foot?
Yes.
So from Main Street, you're gonna be ripping that up again?
Yes.
And, now, that's why, that's what I would want to understand why. Because when Chris put in the house, they had, they ripped up the right-of-way. They put in a significant drainage and plumbing for, in wiring and all that was done for the home. And now you're saying you need to rip it up because you're putting in one more home? That's--
We struggle with the same question, honestly. Because it looks there, we feel functions for a second.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that's the construction that's necessary for the subdivision, as approved.
The existing driveway, like Dave says, is about 12 to 14 feet. The plan requires it to be 18 feet.
We'd love to leave it the way it is, put another house down there. We think it would function fine, honestly.
See, waiting for that. I mean, that's, hopefully, at some point, maybe aside from a Planning Board meeting, we can have a discussion to minimize the disruption to the neighborhood in terms of those types of projects. You guys know they're very disruptive. That rattled our home when you ripped that up the first time, and it's gonna happen again. And that's where we'll continue to fight it, honestly. You know, that's kind of, I don't, I'm not gonna just let it happen. Sorry.
Could we ask for Engineering's opinion on that, since we're gonna hear back from them for the next meeting? Can we--
We did--
--ask an opinion of Engineering on the viability of the road as built to support two homes, even though that would be--
For that stretch there?
For that one stretch.
Mr. Schlegler, your opinion on it? Hold up a minute.
I mean, I would love to see it as minimal as possible, but I think the fire department is gonna have the ultimate say on what needs to be put there.
Well, it sounds like they might be too busy to answer.
We can certainly--
When I did meet with them, they indicated that they wouldn't have any intention of bringing the ladder truck down there unless absolutely necessary. And he said their protocol would be to send a smaller vehicle down to see if the ladder was needed, then they would send the ladder down. So--
If I may, if I may, I know we're moving to 18 feet in this, in this request. I think the extension off of Loon Way I heard was 16. We'll, we'll move it down as, as less as possible with the asphalt and move to more stabilized gravel, if that's a request that wants to come from this board to fire. We're more than happy to do that. We consider less is more in this particular scenario. But again, we, you know, as, coming in as the developer, are going to get a little harder line from highway and fire. That's just a fact.
So if I may, six-wheeler lane, Grobianic again. So in our, on our wheeler lane, eight-wheeler lane subdivided a while back, and we ended up getting ten-wheeler lane back there. We have a, I believe our wheeler lane is eight feet.
Twelve, I think.
So it's, it's small. We've got five houses back there. We don't ever have any issues. The fire department never had any issues when 10 was being built and ours was at 12. So I guess, you know, if we are looking at providing less asphalt and, you know, taking up less of the Conway's side right-of-way and their land, you know, I don't see why just two houses can't have, you know, that same right-of-way remaining. Nothing was dug up on ours. And a gigantic house moved back there on 10-wheeler lane, so.
It kind of feels like a common sense win-win-win. I mean, less work for you and cost for you.
We actually have more turns and twists going down into eight and 10 than they do. So if there would have been a problem, surely it would have been with wheeler lane. I mean, it's, it's a 90-degree turn to get down to eight and 10. And then it splits off again, and it goes down into a little ravine, and it then goes back. I mean, it was, you know, it's a, it's a lot of twists and turns back there, so.
I, I 100% agree. And what I don't wanna do is have them start the process over again and have Engineering and Fire. Is there a way to have this discussion with Engineering, Fire, and Police?
We can, we can facilitate that conversation. I, we're happy to do that.
Okay.
There's a public safety standard they have to be--
I understand. There's rules and regulations on what needs to be done there, right? Well, I think the board would be happy to weigh some of that if, if we can get everybody on board on that.
Yeah.
So--
It's not like you're putting in six houses back there or something either. It's like, how much--
One more.
Yeah, is incurred by one additional house.
If you remember, our original argument coming in for an hour roadway in the beginning, and I don't think this entire Planning Board was seated, but our argument was wheeler lane adjacent to us, how they were able to add another home or two on eight to 10 or 12 feet of asphalt and not have a public safety concern. That didn't really carry any weight. We got to the board and/or to the Public Safety Administration. So I, I don't know that you're going to change their feelings now, but maybe if this board is willing to have that discussion with them, it would change that. But that was always our, wheeler lane has eight or 10 on far less asphalt than we have, yet we're building one or two and doubling the size.
And given where it is in town and, and access to traffic and disruption to neighbors, I mean, I feel like it's worth exploring a conversation on it.
I agree.
And Engineering should, I think, be favorable because of the reduced--
I think Engineering may be okay, as long as the water's taken care of. I don't wanna speak for them, but I think it's public safety that's gonna be the hurdle.
Right.
So, yeah, if we can have that conversation, I think it'd be better for everybody.
Less pavement means less runoff. So that should be a pretty easy thing for the Engineering to review.
So the one other point I'd add is that the right-of-way is straight, you know, let's say the first 200 feet, certainly. And that's the area I'm selfishly most concerned about. There is an old linden tree on, on Main Street and sort of at the corner of our property. There's actually two on, one closer to 62 Main. It borders it nicely. But that, the initial conversation I had with Chris Fennel some time back was potentially, you know, that tree is kind of a nuisance to begin with. Lindens are very soft. It's tough to maintain because there's a utility pole there. And that, to me, might be, you know, if that tree came down, for example, the entryway is wide open then. And that, it would give certainly the developer trucks, as well as fire trucks, easy access right down the right-of-way. And then what-- And then what, you know, what they want to do once they get over the right of way is plenty of space. But I would prefer not to have to rip up the road again. And if you take down that linden, you will have a very wide entryway, certainly wider than what would be at wheeler lane now for five homes.
Right.
And then it's a straight shot.
All right. So, why don't we make that the plan?
Well, can I ask a question, too? So, Jeff and Joe, maybe. So, when this land court decision came out, was there anything that said this had to be a roadway? Because why isn't this just a shared driveway, which eliminates all of these problems?
Well, as they mentioned earlier, well, first of all, it already was before the application in 2015. It already was an existing right of way. So, period. And right of way provides frontage, which is necessary, but really providing a common driveway through the right of way, it's really just, really just getting a waiver of construction standards for the subdivision roadway if it's within the right of way, so, which is what they did. So, you need the frontage, but it already existed for...
Mr. Chair, if I could just add to, I think, your staff's discussions with public safety and engineering, is that, you know, obviously, less is more all the way down the road. I do feel the first 300 feet, not only consideration of the butter, but also the townspeople driving by. If we could leave that, leave the trees, leave the wall, leave everything untouched, it's 300 feet. If we are trying to pass as neighbors, we can see each other from 300 feet and make accommodations to let other people by. And it would really allow us to hopefully leave that first leg untouched, which I think is probably the charm of the town center there. You know, push for the entire piece, but if you're unable to break that block, then at least maybe settle on that first leg of it being as-is. We feel it's going to function.
Yep, okay. All right. Anybody else?
I just have one more question. I'm sorry. Emily Burney, Wheeler. If the land court decision resulted in two lots being, or two dwellings, how long does that land court decision hold weight for?
Well, the plan's been recorded, so it's, if the plan's recorded, it's...
I'm not sure the subdivision plan is recorded. I mean, the land court decision is still valid. So, as long as they exercise and get the plan recorded within the, what, seven years or so from whatever, they have a good amount of time to act on this. You still have quite a bit of time.
I guess I'm just wondering, can they come back and ask for another lot?
We can't prevent them from doing so, but again, my fading recollection from back in 2015 is, I think, in addition to concerns from abutters, I think they might not have been meeting all the dimensional requirements that zoning cities need for those lots, but we can certainly double-check that. There's also nothing that says the dimensional zoning requirements could change in the future when they amend the zoning bylaws. So, you can never say they can't come back. Obviously, once it's developed, it becomes far less likely that they have that flexibility going forward. Once they, if they plan for two, they site for two lots, you know, you don't usually magically have another lot, you know, but you can't rule out anything.
All right.
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue this, what is this, PB?
Twenty-five, ten.
Twenty-five, ten, to our meeting June 2nd, 2025, seven o'clock, in this room.
Some more.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Was that your pointer right there?
All right. Going on general business.
First item, review draft decision for PB 241487 West Street after the fact request for a project generating more than one acre of disturbance, specifically the construction of six month square foot garage, pre-removal and installation of drainage infrastructure. I'm the staff, any first? Attorney Robbins?
I mean, you had a meeting last May 5th. The applicant addressed all of engineering's concerns, addressed the draft decision, and provided to the applicant. I don't think it has any requested changes, other than maybe a discussion around, you know, the amount of time it'll take to implement the plan moving forward. So, do you want to mention anything?
The only change I had was that, I think he suggested 120 days. Staff had suggested 120 days in the decision. I would request 180, just go to the end of the year. Just practically speaking, once this is approved, we actually have to find a contractor that will install this. Once we find that contractor, we actually have to schedule a pre-construction meeting with all required documents, and then we actually have to complete the construction. So, I would just ask that that be changed to 180 days. Other than that, everything exceeds reasonable. That will bring us to December. I think right now, we have to have all construction done by September, which is unlikely.
Okay. Bob?
No, I'm fine. I noticed they've changed. They've corrected the plan as to removing the address for the commercial parcel.
Dylan?
Nope, nothing.
Dylan?
No, nothing.
Darren?
No additional comments.
All right. So, with the change to 180 days, a motion to approve the draft decision?
Some more.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Robbins.
Thank you very much.
Next, general business, PB 2513, 142 Luton Road, Unit 7, request to change approved views from retail sales to general public, 110 Nutrition to Medical Office Revival Aesthetics.
On the way out, happy.
Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Kristen Slomota. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. Welcome. Joe, you want to give us an introduction on this?
Sure. So, this is going, this business proposed going where 110 Nutrition is current? Well, I guess was currently.
What was it?
110 Nutrition. So, that was a, because retail sales would have fallen under the zone dialogue. This will fall under medical office. Recent category developed, that's last town meeting. So, the health department didn't have any concerns, police, conservation, fire, nobody had any concerns with the proposed use as it's indicated in your packet. They call information hours of operation were indicated in there as well. No addition to the property at all. I don't know if there's any other details the applicant would like to provide, but otherwise, there are no comments from town staff.
Probably even less traffic.
Yes.
All right. Bob, do you have any questions?
No, I think you just hit, I just wanted to find what was there before compared to the traffic, and there should be much less traffic, so that's not a concern.
No concerns.
Dylan?
No concerns.
Darren?
No. Just a reminder, is there parking under that building?
Yes.
Is there residential park below? Yeah, so, okay. No worries. No questions.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve PB 2513, 142 Luton Road, Unit 7, change of use from retail sales to medical office?
Some more.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the proposed opening date.
Hopefully sometime in June, not July.
July.
Yeah.
Good luck.
We're going to do a little bit of construction inside. This is a big open space, so we're going to put a couple walls.
Nice. Great.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. The most anticipated part of the evening. Everybody who was at the edge of their seats. Board reorganization, appointments for the following positions, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative to NIMCOG, Representative to CPC, Representative to Stormwater Panel, Pedestrian Safety, Open Space Planning, Recreation Plan Update Committee, the MICMOD Pedestrian Improvement Plan Committee, and Route 40 corridor study. To begin, I'll ask staff to take over for Chair, and then the newly appointed Chair can continue from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll entertain any nominations for Chair. Are there any nominations?
If Mike wants to do it again, I think he runs a pretty smooth ship, so I would nominate him if he's amenable.
Can I second him?
Amenable.
Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for Chair?
All right.
Is there any discussion on the motion for Mike Bonofano as Chair of Planning Board? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, staying? No? Carry unanimously. Congratulations, and I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Now, are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Well, Dylan, you've been vice for a couple times, right?
I did at least one, yeah.
So, I mean, Bob, would you have interest in being Vice Chair?
I'll do that, that's fine.
Given longer tenure, so I'll recommend Bob if that's...
All right. Bob, would you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? All right. Seeing none?
Wait, who was the second on that?
I was the second.
All right. Can we get a vote to Bob Schafer, Vice Chair? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stayed? Congratulations, Bob. All right, Representatives for NIMCOG. Don't everyone jump up at once?
Oh, yeah, they just did.
You were?
Yeah.
Joni, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Joni for NIMCOG representative, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Joni. Representative to CPC?
I am that person today. I'm happy to keep doing it if the board would like me to keep doing it.
Nominate Dylan. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor for Dylan for CPC, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Dylan. Representative for Stormwater Panel, this is a heavy lifting. I've done it. I'm willing to stay on. Does anybody else want it?
Nominate Mike for Stormwater Panel.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Pedestrian Safety Committee?
I would be happy to stay on with that, too.
Awesome. Nominate Joni for Sidewalk Committee?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Joni. Open Space Recreation Plan Update Committee, this is new, correct?
This is new, yes.
Anybody interested in this?
I was going to suggest maybe we discuss the three of these and figure out how to address them. God, there's about three new ones here, so.
And I guess I would say, and with that said, I'd be willing to take on Route 40, or any of them, actually, but I'm sure you can pull this stuff up to take part in those committees.
I'd say the Pedestrian Improvement Plan and Route 41, those will be more intensive, but they'll be, I guess, shorter amount of commitment time, both scheduled to end at June 2026. The Open Space Plan will be probably about four or five meetings in this upcoming year, and then meeting probably once or twice a year, just as follow-up on, you know, how the plan is getting implemented.
So, from a historical perspective, I did participate in the original 110 master plan, so maybe the Pedestrian Improvement Plan, I'd be willing to take that on. I have that background already.
If you want to do that, Bob, I'll do the Route 40, since I live over there anyway.
Okay. So, I just want to point out, these are, we shamelessly suggested on those committees that Planning Board, you should at least be asked to have representation. If you are dead set against it, the charge is not yet finalized, but we think it makes good sense for your board to be actively...
I think it makes great sense for all these, in terms of the relationship between them and the master plan and what we do, yeah.
So, any takers for the Open Space Recreation Plan Update Committee?
What is that one? Is that, that's new, you said?
Yeah.
That's new?
It's new, yeah. That's for updating the Open Space Plan this year, basically by the end of the year. And then subsequently, once the plan has been updated, meeting once or twice a year as a group just to follow-up on, you know, how the plan is getting implemented, do priorities need to shift, of what's being carried out from the plan. So, it's less intensive, but it's a longer duration.
Right.
If the plan is a set, your plan.
Any ideas on scheduling of that, and how often, and who?
I can't. So, that's a big variable for you folks.
I think the suggestion was Thursdays, but it was only a suggestion on the plan you presented to us last...
Last meeting.
Meeting.
And I guess if we don't decide tonight, we can always backfall.
Yeah.
But it sounds like we have some, depending on the schedule, we have potential volunteer for Route 40.
Either we take terms with you.
MICMOD and Open Space.
Subject to schedule and bill, and there's nothing that prevents an alternate.
Right.
Yeah.
To ensure the planning board always has representation.
All right. So, let's just go ahead. Nominate Bob for the MICMOD Pedestrian Improvement Plan Committee?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I nominate Mike for the Route 40 corridor study committee? Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And I guess we'll leave Open Space open for now.
Let's leave Open Space for Open Space.
Open Space.
Do we, are we, no volunteer for Open Space?
No, we're waiting to find out more information.
Mike, might be willing if it works with the schedule, Mr. Chair.
I mean, I'm certainly willing to take that on as well, because I don't have the others that you already have.
Well, let's see what it looks like.
So, yeah. We can see what to do. Before one July, so.
Yeah, let's, let's see. And we can always, yeah.
All right. Didn't see minutes in the package?
They came in right on pack day, so we just, next meeting.
From next week. And I didn't see correspondence.
No.
So, if there's anything else? All right. Any motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.